Father, we just come before you to help ourselves and ask for wisdom and understanding in the decisions we make. I ask that you bring unity and love in this community, teach us to love and truly know each other. I ask that your kingdom would come here in this city as it is in heaven. In the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, our first item is the consent agenda, but if the council is okay with this, I'd like to make a quick change to our agenda. Chief would like to add a presentation on here for one of our officers. So if you guys are okay with that, I would ask for a motion to amend the agenda to add a presentation.
Motion.
Motion in second. All in favor, please show it by raising of your hands. Motion carries. With that, I would ask for consent agenda to be approved, so I would have a motion for that.
Motion.
Motion in second. All in favor, please show it by raising of your hands. Consent agenda is approved. All right, number one tonight is this presentation that we are going to add into our agenda. I'm going to turn it over to Chief Shepherd.
The Hogginsville Police Department believes in the recognition of officers for their actions and outstanding efforts in service to their community and their fellow officers. In keeping with this belief, the City of Hogginsville and the Hogginsville Police Department recognize Officer Heath McKinney for his outstanding efforts that occurred on June 27th, 2023. During the evening of June 27th, 2023, Officer Heath McKinney responded to a person injured with profuse bleeding call in the City of Hogginsville. Officer McKinney arrived on scene. He quickly observed the person with a laceration to his foot in the home. With both fire and EMS reporting delayed response due to other calls, Officer McKinney immediately began an assessment of the injury. Officer McKinney began immediate lifesaving measures using improvised bleeding control devices that resulted in the cessation of arterial bleeding. Officer McKinney's quick response, recognition of the severity of the medical emergency, immediate actions, and effective first responder skills resulted directly in the saving of this person's life. A failure to act or action after delay could have led to a tragic outcome. Therefore, Officer McKinney's actions qualify him for this lifesaving award and bestows upon him the department's and the city's appreciation. Also, the individual who was injured could not make it here tonight. His family is here on his behalf. So on behalf of the citizens of the City of Hogginsville, present you this plaque. Thank you. This lifesaver pin. Thank you. And something so that next time you'll be able to carry your first aid kit with you. Officer McKinney did this alone without fire and EMS. As we know, in Hogginsville, sometimes it takes a little bit to get an ambulance here. That particular night, even the fire services were overwhelmed. Officer McKinney actually came from another call that he was assisting backing up the Sheriff's Department in the county to answer this call because even the county was backed up. He assisted in loading this individual into a car, and he was taken to the hospital after the bandages and the tourniquet was placed. And Officer McKinney ensured that the bleeding had stopped enough to get this gentleman to the hospital. So he did all this on his own without any help from anyone. Officer McKinney is noted is an EMT. He was a firefighter before he came over to the police department, so his skills are very valuable and invaluable to us within the city. And I thank you for your.
Chief, thank you for doing that. I think it's very important to give honor where honor is due. And I think our officers so many times and lots of our first responders have to go through things that we don't see day to day. So thank you for honoring your officers and taking care of them. What was item number one on our presentation tonight is a... Oh, she did. Okay. So Malat Consulting will not be here. However, since there are a lot of people in the room, I think it's a good opportunity to say that Malat Consulting is a company that we've hired to do a full analysis on our current parks. Myself and the council are have a huge desire to see more usable space in our city and so with our parks and our recreation facilities. And so we've hired Malat Consulting to give us a full breakdown of what's possible with our current spaces and with the desire to hopefully bring a lot more opportunities for our next generation here. So that's what that was about. We will move them in that update to our following council meeting. We will move on to new business. Item number one on our item and our agenda tonight for new business is a Georgia Power yard lease. This is an item that we discussed several weeks ago where Georgia Power is wanting to lease our space to stage equipment. Mr. Niles or Andy, I don't know if either one of you guys want to add anything to this, but...
No, they're going to use space that they're going to pay money for. It's five months, it's a five-month lease, and like it's for $7,500 total.
So council, you guys had this, we discussed this several weeks ago. Do you guys have any questions? Or Alex, I know you've looked over this lease and all the terms.
I have. I know it's a recommendation of city administration to a person to lease. It's $1,500 per month. It's property that's not being used. It is a five-month term. If it extends beyond that, it will continue to be $1,500 per month as long as Georgia Power uses it. It's for staging for them to complete some improvements on their current structures out at the Sprayfield. And it's pretty straightforward.
Okay. Council, you guys have any questions or other discussion? Well, then I would ask for a motion to approve the current lease agreement as recommended by our staff.
Motion.
Motion in second. All in favor of approval, please raise your hand. Motion carries. So we'll get that going, and I guess they'll be moving right away on getting stuff in.
I mean, I think the lease, the term begins in September 1. Is that right?
Okay.
So I think they'll, I think they'll begin moving equipment September 1. I mean, that may fall over the weekend. I'm not sure when that falls, but beginning of September, we'll start.
Item number two tonight is the bid award for the Colvert Repairs Alley and at Dickerson Street in the Sprayfield. This is more ongoing issues that come up from the storms and different things come up. Andy, I know you spent a little bit of time looking at both these locations. Do you want to add anything?
Yeah, so Beckham Marsh would have the flooding rain washed out several of our crossings, two of which left us inaccessible. So we had to get those fitted out. And it looks like we have some leftover payment money that can set some of the costs of that.
Okay. I see we had a couple of different bids come in, and it is the staff's recommendation to approve Crawford grade for both of these projects. So council, do you guys have any questions? There's another two other companies, and again, to remind you guys that offered this year, they're currently mobilized, working on the other projects, which is why they seem to be coming in quite a bit less expensive than the others. So you have Sprayfield, High Tower Crossing, and the amount of $10,792, and Dickinson Road, and the amount of $7,456. Any discussion or questions from the council?
What's the timeframe on both of those projects?
I don't know exactly the timeframe yet. We're just waiting to get approval first and then talk with them and let everybody know. I know they got currently two other projects that they've been working on. This will be a third.
So High Tower Road, they'll start as soon as possible. I mean, sorry, Dickinson Road, they will start as soon as possible. And then Sprayfield is a two-day completion date, but start date as soon as possible. Okay. Any questions or comments from the council? Okay, then I would ask for a motion to approve the staff's recommendation to Crawford for both of these contracts.
Make a motion to approve the contracts to Crawford.
Second.
A motion in a second. All in favor, please show it by raising of your hands. Motion carries. We will let them know, and I think if we can get an update by the next council meeting on how they're prioritizing these repairs, it would be, so we just kind of know, especially people in Sprayfield is not going to affect a lot of people, but Dickinson probably would. So, okay. Item number three tonight is special use permit renewal for the Family Life Center, which we discussed quite a bit last week. Thank you, Dr. McKinney. We had a work session about this, and so there is a request for a renewal. Dr. McKinney, I know you and I spoke. Tonight's not really an opportunity, but I want to give the council an opportunity if they have any specific questions for you in regards to this, and then I would ask for comments from the council.
I would motion that we table it for further review, but if somebody would like to ask questions, I'm fine with that.
What is staff's recommendation?
I do make a motion. I made a motion.
Well, I think it would be good for us to allow any of the council members to have comments. Are you a...
I'm not staff, but I believe, and Ms. Kellis is not here, but I don't think staff has a recommendation on this matter, which is sometimes staff recommends certain actions and sometimes they don't. This is not, staff does not have a recommendation on this matter, and I wish any board can consider that.
Okay. Make a motion, we approve the special use permit?
I have a motion that we approve the special use permit.
Okay. I have a motion.
Yes, I made a rules of order. A motion.
First off, here's what I would like to ask before anybody else makes a motion. Does any other council members have any questions? I do. First, I'd like to say for my questions and discussion time that I do appreciate both motions are on the table, and generally we would do one at a time, but I would like the opportunity, making sure this is on, the opportunity to ask a few questions of Dr. McKinney. At length, we did speak a lot. We had a good amount of time to ask a lot of questions last week. I do appreciate that. I think you're very forthcoming on a lot of our concerns and a lot of our just lack of knowledge, you know? Because what we did talk about last time is that none of us were here last time you came to speak to city council on this, on the original permit. None of us had these seats. We did come shortly after. I can say, I'll repeat a little bit of what I said last week, this type of facility is something that is near and dear to my heart. I have served time in working with similar facilities, with similar at-risk teens of the same age group, children's homes, some through the Georgia Department of Justice, and then others were just wards of the state, such as foster care, and then some were just willingly volunteered over by their parents that were not wards of the state. And those three different groups of at-risk teens are very different in what they've had to deal with. There is a lot of overlap, but those are very different. And I do believe you being the first, this would be the first facility in Hogginsville to my knowledge with this, offering all of these services, and I do think this will set a precedent for many years to come. I do think this is a need that has been not only here, but all over the country, especially in the southern states for a very long time. I did try to get some updated information in the last seven days from some of my local contacts through Department of Justice, but mainly just through DFACS and foster care placement in Truitt County. And they have not been able to get back to me yet with some very specific details that I asked, so the numbers that I have are two years old. But as of two years ago in July, so July of 2021, one facility that I do work closely with in, and they are a foster care placement organization in Truitt County, got a call for, calls for 27 children a week per average for placement for foster care. These children were all from Truitt County, almost. There were a few that were not originally residents of Truitt County, but they were Truitt County's responsibility to find placements for. 27 per week. At that time, just this one organization only had five people approved total for children, not allowed to have more than, obviously, so many in the household. So I want to give that one example, because the other information that I did request to be able to share tonight, like I said, has not been given to me yet, but that shows that there's a major need. However, I do believe that we have to balance all of the risk, all of the reward, and the one question I have, I guess, in saying that, is one thing we talked about last week, is that the children that will be at this, at the Family Life Center are not out of the Department of Justice, but they are just through foster care placement.
Absolutely. And you said quite a bit that I would like to respond to, and I really appreciate your feedback. I'm actually delighted that you brought that information up, largely because we get probably about 25 calls a day for placement. And you said someone tells me 25 a week.
Just that one organization, small organization.
And so, and my phone's ringing now, and I'm on call, and so we're probably getting a call for a kid at this moment. In terms of these kids, Department of Juvenile Justice, no. Any kid that come into the facility on 301 Pine Street will not be connected to the Department of Juvenile Justice. It will only come from the foster care system. I think you also talked about making phone calls to the locals. I provided to you guys letters of support from Ms. Olita Gina. She has daycare on my property. It's probably important to note that she paid absolutely nothing. It's a nonprofit, so we don't charge her anything for rent. It's for free. So make sure you share that in the community, too. That's some of our social giving to that organization. Ms. Gloria Thomas, Ms. Monica Hardy, Ms. Lori Woods, all of them live directly across from the facility. I went door-to-door. I talked to each resident. They provided a letter of support. They know we've been trying to do this now for some time. They're very involved. Mr. Michael Johnson, he has a property directly across the street, across the street from the facility. He also own property on the far side. Mr. Richard Wood and his brother Charles Wood, they live within 10 yards of the front door of the facility. They provide letters of support, and I sent it on the porch and had a long conversation with them. And I've had many conversations over the years with everybody on that street. And then we went back. I know you guys asked about Topperton. We've had that program now almost a decade, nearly 10 years. The mayor of that city has been the mayor since I first went to that location. He wrote a letter of recommendation. You have a copy of it right now. We have a chief of police in Topperton. He also wrote a letter of recommendation. We work hand-in-hand with the police department. Anything that's going on in the community, whether it's fundraising, whether it's supporting the police, whether it's supporting the facilities, they do Christmas for the kids, they do Thanksgiving for the kids. We also have a city councilman, Mr. Andrew Hall, who's on the city council of Antocton, who also is a volunteer and a mentor for our boards. He's been with our programs since I first got there, and he's been with us all the nine years. We have a chair of that town, of that entire county. When I came, I met with him. He was actually the chief of police. Now he's the chair for the county. He provided another letter. These letters are same letters I provided four years ago, and I went back and asked these guys, do you still, do I still have your support? I got the letters the same day. I made a phone call, got the letters the same day. Dr. Sharon Johnson, she is the highest ranking person in the state of Georgia that's over residential programs. She is the highest ranking person. You have a letter there, you read the letter, what she said about the Family Life Center, Dr. McKinney. And she made me cry when I read the letter. And she stated, not only do I bring compassion for these children, she said, I have the expertise. I hold a BSW, MSW, and a PhD in social welfare, and I'm trained to do this. She said they don't see that in foster care. They don't see the level of training and expertise, and she said I'm hands-on. I didn't know this, and I'm glad that, and she didn't do a letter last year, three years ago. We have Dr. William Nguyen. He's a regional director. He's over Truitt County. He's regional directing DFACS. And local DFACS, I reached out to them, and they said, well, you know, everybody in the state loves behind you. We have one conflict, and I understood the conflict. They cannot write a letter. You know why they cannot write a letter locally? Because if we have an allegation, guess who gets, who investigates us? The local DFACS. And so they cannot have a letter in the file saying we're such a great organization, they got to come and investigate, because kids make allegations. They go to school and they say something happened at the residential program, and guess who has to come out? The local DFACS has to come out. And so we didn't want that conflict. We understood that. But when they call, we answer. The local DFACS, they call, we answer. We have the mayor in La Grange, Dr. Willie T. Edson. And, you know, again, the letter that he wrote nearly brought me to tears. He said he's watched us evolve over the years. He's been a city council for 24 years, now he's serving as mayor. And he has seen our programs evolve over the years in the city of La Grange and the strength that we have brought to the programs and services. We have Councilman Leon Chow, and this one hit home as well. This guy here has been a mentor for our program for over eight years, but now he's the city council. He does volunteer work. We do outings with our kids with his organization. We send our kids to after-school programs with his organization. And then we have the Accountability Corps, which is Truitt County, who support us as well. We've done tons of work with them, with families. We have children in foster care. We provide free services. We donated over $4,000 to them just this past summer, and we gave, we did a fundraiser. We did a car show in downtown La Grange. We gave them $4,000. And the $4,000 goes to who? Foster care kids that are in their system. And so we give back. We're not just coming here to run a large outfit.
I'm sorry, I don't necessarily mean to interrupt, but it's all what you're saying right now, so I just had to follow up a question.
Okay, go ahead.
And I appreciate your answer.
Let me make one more statement, Your Honor.
Yeah, go ahead.
And I also went out over the past week when we went to this last meeting, after the last meeting. You guys had a lot of questions. You also asked the questions about whether you wanted, whether the community wanted. So, and it's been four years. We got delayed two and a half years, people, because of COVID, and we couldn't do anything. And so we wanted to make sure, because it dawned on me, well, you know, it's been four years since I had letters of support. It's been four years since I walked the neighborhood. And so I went back to the neighborhood, and I have for you in your package over 200 people who signed that live on the street, live on the back street, live throughout the neighborhood, and they all signed that they support the program. And so, you know, we, and I've done, this is what was asked of me four years ago. Everything that has been asked of me, sir, I pretty much try to give you everything you've asked for, and I'm sorry.
No, no, absolutely. Not a problem. I appreciate that. And this, what you provided tonight is awesome. You know, I would love, I didn't obviously have enough time tonight to be able to go through and read every one of these. I did go through and read about six or seven of these, and thank you for this, Dad. This is very good for research. The follow-up question I had, and I guess this raised the concern that I have, is I do believe there is a very big difference between a foster care placement facility and a Department of Corrections facility. Obviously, I think most people agree those are two different things. And so my question is, given the certification that this facility has on the point where I said that we'd be setting a precedent for the future of Hogginsville, 25 years from now even, you know, who's going to be the CEO at that time of this facility? My question is, yes, you told us that you are not accepting children through the Department of Corrections, but are you qualified, like, would this, would this Family Life Center be allowed to do that if they wanted to?
No, no.
Are you certified to take children through, from the Department of Corrections?
We are certified. However, we do not admit, okay? Our certification, our accreditation, we have a three-year accreditation with CAR. We are credited for intensive level programs, but we do not accept Department of Juvenile Justice children, and we do not have a contract with them. Now, do we get referrals every day?
So my concern with that, and that's what I'm saying, going back to the word precedent, my concern with that is five years from now, if Family Life Center did start taking children from Department of Corrections, would everyone still sign this petition? And that is my only concern, is, you know, is there a chance that that would change in the future where we did take children from the Department of Corrections?
Well, Your Honor, you have no desire to have kids that are from Department of Juvenile Justice, and I explained that last week. The children from Department of Juvenile Justice, I love them as well, but we're not, that's not our program design. Our program is designed is not to bring into our facilities children who have murder charges, they have carjacking charges, they have, you know, gang, a lot of different gang charges, or violence, or what have you, or weapons charges. That's not our program design. Our program design is for children who have most unknown health issues associated with abuse and trauma that they've experienced. Our facility will be a trauma-focused facility. It would not be a detained center. DJJ detained children.
Correct.
And so we don't do that. And the question that you had last week about will they roam the neighborhood and if they're not, if they're not kids in trouble, why couldn't they walk to the store? They cannot walk to the store, even though they're not DJJ children, is because when every child comes into my custody, they're my responsibility, and I treat them as my child. And so we have to know where they are at all times, 24/7, not because they're criminals, it's because the liability associated with having DFACS children is, it's a huge liability. And so we have to be responsible for those children. They put us with, they put those children with us because the parents didn't take care of them, and the parents didn't supervise them. So we have to do what the parents didn't do. And so, no, they were not roaming the neighborhood, they cannot walk to the store alone, and they're not arrested and detained with the Department of Juvenile Justice and then transitioned to what they call residential programs. That's not our program design. We do not take them seriously.
Because I have, I've worked in two different types of facilities. One of them was, like I said, was complete through the DJJ. And it is very, it was OTP. You mentioned he did. I had to stay there as well.
Yeah.
After he was not, different times. But, so I definitely know that, as you would know, that the programs designed for those different groups are very different, you know? They don't work for different ones. And my main concern, because I truly believe, like, this is the program that you have designed, and that's what the Family Life Center is going to focus on, but my concern is, is that subject to change over time?
No, and you can make a record of that. Make a record of that, that we have no desire to change our program design to take DJJ children at that location. We have no desire to do it. Make a note of that for the record.
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I know about your other facilities, they are program designated MWO maximum watchful oversight program.
Yes, ma'am.
I do have the definition of what that is.
Yes, ma'am.
My concern is, under your other programs, you do take in placement type accepted as DJJ custody, because these are more difficult cases. And I know your qualifications, like your basic qualification for childcare or child foster care is traditional, that's your very base one, and those are people that are young people that need placement, they're pretty easy to get along with, they might be on ADHD medicine. But these MWO students are very difficult, they're severe cases. My question is, what will Hogginsville's designation be? When you sign up with Georgia Score and with the state level where you have to, you know, record what your designation is, what is going to be your designation to Hogginsville?
All of our programs are, I'm sorry, all of our programs are designated MWR, including Hogginsville, and that was the designation when we came for the special use permit. And that's a great question. And one of the things came up, I think some of the council members did their research as well. And so two things came out of the meeting. In the meeting, they asked, if these kids are maximum watchful oversight, it's going to be too much by a public school. Can you guys, how are you going to educate? So we said we'd develop our own school. That's where the school discussion came in. So we created our own school. So at this facility, you would have brave six through 12, and these kids would be able to get a high school diploma, okay? The second question came up, well, if these kids are maximum watchful oversight, what type security will you have outside of staff? I said, well, the staff ratio is 1 to 5, and we discussed that last week. And so that's the state regulation of, those are state requirements, and we do very well in downtown La Grange with 1 to 5. We do very well in downtown Topperton. Our programs in downtown Topperton as well, with 1 to 5. However, that council at the time said, well, could we get extra support because we had some people in the community that was concerned? So I said, absolutely. So I went back, talked to my board. We said we would create a security team, and they would be 24/7, that will be outside of my actual staff, that's 1 to 5. I would give you an additional security staff that will also take care that will also take care of the grounds and make sure that if the community's feeling unsafe, whatever the situation may be. And that will be permanent. That won't be something temporary to start. That won't be something that we would do one time a week. That will be something we would do seven days a week, we have twenty-four hour security. We've already put up our camera system over there. That was something that, that the last board talked about, the camera system. So it's already there. And I can see everything that happened in that facility right now on my cell phone. And, and any administrator, that's what my organization can do, do so as well. And so security will be there, based on the recommendation of last board, and the education system will be there, grade six through twelve as well.
Um, and, and under the circumstances, my, my hugest concern is the daycare. And reading the three pages of definitions of what that, that designation is, they are, they are potentially dangerous. They do have severe problems. And your facilities in all locations have had kids that have actually been able to leave on their own life runaways. Um, there have been problems at your facilities. And in twenty nineteen, when this was first brought up, Chief Har talked about the facility you had on Granite Street, which had six kids in it max with one behavioral specialist. And that place had twenty-two incident lights up, everything from terrorist threats to assault and battery. Uh, we know there was a fight club going out of it, and that your actual resident system got arrested. Or what, misdeeds. Um, I hate to bring that up, but I'm, I'm bringing it up for the community to know. The community needs to know. And I want-
Ladies and gentlemen, please, please respect me once more.
I want Ms. Obarian to have a list, and all of her clients to have a list of what this maximum watchful oversight program really means. My preference would be, I want the facility here, but if you could change the designation to traditional and basic, and you still have kids coming through, that would be of no, no harm to our community at all. And they can actually go to our school system. There wasn't any security, they could actually participate in our school system.
And, and thank you for that feedback. Uh, I, I will say, and, and I hate to say this in terms of, uh, Department of Family Children Services, we have a great relationship. Uh, but in terms of your basic care kids, they have no supervision. And they can come and go, or they can walk the neighborhood. And so what you're requesting would be totally opposite of what the community really wants.
But the basic care kids have no problems other than maybe ADHD medicine, like a lot of students do.
And my response to that, uh, Honorable Councilman, is that I've been in private practice twenty-nine years. I've done individual, group, and family therapy. I've worked with families, children, adults, and adolescents. My entire, as, as a licensed person, via Medicaid, private insurance, I have worked, and, and I'm safely saying this, I have worked with children that are in the home much worse than any kids I've had in my group. And then, no, 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 let me finish. This is a true story. And these children in our communities don't have a supervisor. They don't have the counseling, they don't have the therapy, and they don't have the support and mentors that a program like ours does. And so the daycare is, is not in jeopardy at all. Ms. Jita and I have had conversations, uh, over the years. Uh, when I purchased the facility, she understood what, what the outcome and what the goal was. So it's no surprise to anybody. And as I mentioned, we support the daycare one hundred percent. We will ensure that those kids are safe. Uh, the only requirement from the last council was that we had a fence, a, a large fence to separate the two locations. And that has been the only thing that was required. And, and I will assure you, those babies will be safe. I would not bring those kids into that facility if I was bringing anybody into danger. That includes those babies next door to me in my facility. I'm gonna be responsible for that, okay? I'm gonna be responsible. And I will make sure that they're safe. And the community is safe as well. I don't think we need security. But it was requested. And so I'm a, I'm a good neighbor. I was asked to create a good neighbor plan. I gave you the good neighbor plan. You have it, you have a document. You had, you asked me about a protocol on reporting the incidents. We're gonna have a, a, a security team that would do that. You have a chief of police that I can work closely in collaboration with. Uh, spoke with him on last week when I left, he said, I don't know what the vote's gonna be, but I got guys lined up at my door who wanna mentor those boys. That would be a great opportunity. I believe any community that has law enforcement, that wants to be community-minded and community-focused, that's the things that they should be doing. They should be mentoring kids and-
My people do that.
Okay, well, I'm not, I'm not saying they don't, but what I'm saying, this would be a great opportunity to, to have these young men to see law enforcement, learn to respect law enforcement, have relationships with law enforcement. We have a group every Thursday at my facility in La Grange with a police officer from La Grange Police Department. Every Thursday, he comes out for one hour. He does what he calls motivational groups and moral development for our boys. Teaching them not only social skills, but teaching them about obeying the law, authority, family, parents, and even our staff. And so it's a great collaboration. I think the same thing could happen here. And so, um, I hear what you're saying in terms of the, um, let me give you a good example, uh, Mrs. Cribble. McDonald's serves Big Macs. They've been serving Big Macs for years. If, if the county or the city told McDonald's they couldn't sell Big Macs, they now have to sell hot dogs, I think they'd be thrown for a loop. Okay, we could say Wendy's. Wendy's is known for Dave's Big Burger. If we tell Wendy's now they gotta start serving hot dogs, and they've been serving hamburgers and Dave's burgers for all these years, they'd be thrown for a loop. You're a business owner. You own Rogers Barbecue. You sell fish, catfish, I love it, it's good. And I, and every time I come, every time I come here, I come to eat. And it's good food. But if I came to your place and the city town have told you you can no longer serve that catfish, chances off, I'm gonna pass right by you. Because I, I want catfish, I don't want hot dogs. Now you gotta start serving hot dogs. But it probably would put you at a disadvantage. Because your expertise is selling catfish and barbecue. And so with you telling me that, changing my designation, it throws me for a loop. It confuses me, because that's not my expertise. My expertise is I work with the MWO's, that's what, that's what I've been doing for thirty years.
So explain to the community what MWO's really mean. Uh, that's the only thing that I'm concerned about.
Absolutely.
I think the neighborhood wants it, I can understand that. But I want them to know before any vote comes up what a WMO and AWO is, that they are more severe. You even state that in your documentation to the state. And my, my biggest concern is that it's right next to the daycare. And I think that the daycare clients should know what a WMO and an AWO is. Before we make this decision, we need to be, everybody needs to be, not just a few people, everybody in our community needs to be aware.
Your Honor, I, I have absolutely no pause with that, uh, and, and I hear you loud and clear. I've been at this podium, in this city now, trying to make this happen for a decade. If this city doesn't know what we're doing over there by now, then I'm very confused. And I was a bit confused, but I talked with the mayor. He explained to me why y'all didn't know about it. He said, y'all was new. I said, okay. He asked me, uh, could I come and present the program and services? I said, yes, sir, no problem. And then he explained to me that you guys will never hear it, y'all didn't know anything about it. And so my point here is, I walked that neighborhood now out of this, uh, senior high school. I started trying to do this when he was in the fourth grade. You know what he asked me to do? He said, you gonna be there with that again? I said, yeah, I'm going. I've been trying to do this since he was in the fourth grade. He's a senior high school. And every time I come here, you guys ask me to do something differently. And I do it. And I don't complain, I do what you ask me to do.
Dr. McCamey, in all due respect, not every time you come here, because last week was the, the last week was the first week that we-
Sir, that's not correct. I have been to this city hall, and I, I wouldn't mind if you would speak up, sir. I know you only been here a short period of time. I have come in here to get permits, I have come in here for, for different meetings for the last year.
I, well, I'm just, I'm just-
No, 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 no. I have done this, uh, to your honor, I really have.
Miss McCamey.
Yes, sir.
Hang on, hang on, hang on.
Yes, sir.
Excuse me. My point that I'm trying to make is that this council has not asked anything extra last week, one week ago.
That's not true, Your Honor, that's not true.
One week ago was the first time that you gave us a presentation.
Okay.
One week ago.
Okay.
So since that time, this council and or myself has asked anything specific for you to change anything.
Okay, so that's bottom line then. Because your city manager have walked me into this office and asked for a number of things over the past year. And she said it was something that we have to have for the council. And so that's bottom line. Because now there's no transparency. And that, and, and your comments are creating a, a major issue here.
Mr. Mayor, if I may add, um, I sat in a meeting with Dr. McCamey, Lisa, Dr. McCamey's staff, and, um, the building designer. When they were asked to come with new designs for the building, drawings as is, this was back in March. We sat there. Our city manager and Mr. Nows, you were here at the time. What was said was we were gonna compile all the information for council so that we could get a decision made. This was back in March of twenty twenty-three. I sat in that meeting with Dr. McCamey. So that was in March, this is August. So he has been here-
Your Honor, Mr. Taylor, we can go back to January. When we were just trying to get the meter in. Is this the same guy? Or you open the meter department as well? Okay, and so we went back and forth to get a meter in. So we've had these discussions since January. And at no point did anybody tell me that there was a problem with approving, uh, renewing the permit. So to me, to drag this on for all these months, I was back in December from Windowsy. And we, we got permits for that. No one said that was a problem. All I was told that, you know, uh, your permit be coming up for renewal in about thirteen, fourteen months. But we were working, and we spent tons of money on that, tons of money.
I understand. You and I both had this conversation.
Yes, sir, I, I just wanna put that on record, because you said that you guys didn't know.
Well, I'm just saying, this particular body of leadership has not, you have not come to us and us ask you to do anything specific over and over again. The point is, is we, we care about this project enough to have these conversations. We care about this project enough to make sure that we fully understand what this is gonna look like for the entire community, not just for Pine Street. And so, you know, as much as work has been being done, and, and all of those things that you, that you've mentioned, um, I think it's important for, I mean, we've had this discussion, but for the entire community to understand that this council does, does not have all that information. And up until last week, was the first that we heard about all these plans, including the new, the new, um, Phase Two, or whatever, of, of what will then be a completely different type of facility. As you mentioned last week, your headquarters, which will provide uh, soup kitchen or food for the elderly on a weekly basis, all those types of things. We're talking about, I'm just making the point is that we're, our conversation last week was, hang on, let me listen. Our conversation last week was the first time, but we, we're giving all this information. And this is very helpful. Okay, two hundred signatures is very helpful.
Okay, thank you, Your Honor. But everything you just said was in the initial plan. The soup kitchen was in the initial plan. And so everything that you're saying right now was approved by the last city council. The soup kitchen was approved at that point, okay? The Phase Two was approved at that point. Nothing has changed.
The problem is, is that that is not what came through planning and zoning.
Tony, please, Tony, please let me finish.
Yeah, what, but-
It wasn't in our packet.
Okay, well, okay, let me explain that. Planning and zoning, the only issue that they had a concern with, with the program, and I explained this to you. I have that on record, okay, and you guys have it on record. And I was a bit disappointed, because Lisa said she couldn't find the letters of support from last, from the last time. And you guys didn't have them, that's why I went out and got more. Planning and zoning said we wanted to make sure the residential program was something that the community wanted. They asked me to go out and do focus groups with the community and tell them exactly what we do. And those program designations that you're speaking about, Your Honor, I actually went and I remember. I had a series of meetings with the community. Opened it up for people to come, and they came. It was a very good turnout. Planning and zoning said, well, they approved it, okay? The other thing about the other building is that no renovations were gonna be done in, in terms of structural changes. It was already a school. It was an existing structure. So nothing has to be changed in that building. So you're good there. What has to be approved is a plan for your residential program, because you're turning a school building into a residential program. We done that, we got that plan. That plan had been on file with Lisa, who was part of the city government at the time. She was very familiar with the process, because she was actually clerk at the time. She came back, uh, back in May, April. And she said, well, we can't use the plans anymore, because she put the kitchen in the residential building, which was, was not the plan. And I said, okay, that's fair. That's fair, because we're, we initially said the kitchen was gonna be in the school building. COVID hit us and knocked us flat on our bottom. We had over two years, we couldn't do anything. So we came back after about two and a half years of recess because of COVID. I got sick myself, I was down sometime. And so we said, well, we need to fast-track this thing. We're gonna put a kitchen in one of the day room areas and change that into a dining room. And that's what we did. You seen the pictures last week, okay? And so that, and then Ms. Lisa said, well, you modified the plans. So now you gotta do a whole set of different plans. I said, cool. I, I, I was disappointed at first, because I thought we was moving forward. I got to thinking, I got to, you know, put my mind together, I said, okay, that, that's fair enough. I went and got the plans. I can't even remember now, maybe to the tune of about four thousand dollars. Paid about four thousand dollars, okay? Got a whole new set of plans. Now, keep in mind, this time she tell me the other building in Phase Two gotta have a, a plan. I said, well, it's not gonna change. Well, we got new policies now. You've seen the email, because I copied you on it, you should have a copy of it. She's kept telling me for weeks, there's a new policy and a new process of doing permits. But she never could respond to the question. I said, well, send it to me in writing what the new permits are. I have a paper trailer, okay? She never could send it. I called you, Mr. Mayor, Your Honor, you say, well, yeah, uh, I don't know if it's new plans, we're just being more organized, we enforcing our policies. That was your response. I said, I get it, okay? So I went on and got the new plans for that building as well. Those plans were sent to your office the first week of July. No one responded to me from your office. It's July tenth. I sent an email, and I sent it to Lisa, she didn't respond then. I said, well, the plans are in. And, and in that meeting with Your Honor, uh, Mr. Taylor, we had a local fire marshal that was working the plans with us. City manager said, well, the local fire marshal can't do it anymore. And I'm sitting in a meeting, I'm dumbfounded.
I, I, I understand.
So, so why can't, excuse me, Your Honor, why can I not? Why can the local fire marshal not, not do it? He's certified by the state, I called the state and the state said he could.
Dr. McCamey, out of respect, I'm not here to have the conversation about all-
Well, but she brought up, she, she wanna bring up some stuff, I need to re, re- respond.
I, I agree, but I would like, I would like Mr. Taylor-
I'm sorry, Your Honor, you go ahead and speak, sir.
And I'm just trying to, tonight, specifically for the council to have this discussion.
Yes, sir.
Okay, going out, because I know a lot of people are here, some in favor, some not in favor.
That's fine.
My point is, I think it's important to have this conversation, so I'd like Mr. Taylor.
Sorry, sir, sorry.
I would just like to add that this, this process has been lengthy. And, and I can see how it is has been frustrating, especially with, you know, some of you guys being business owners. If you have been drug on for this long with a house you're trying to sell, a restaurant you're trying to buy, you would feel the same frustration. And for Dr. McCamey to be here before us, years and years and years later, trying to do the same thing, is frustrating. I was here years ago down at other city hall when he tracked the same project. I don't know if you guys were here. But I was familiar with the project. So to say that the whole council does not know about what's going on, speak for yourself. Because when we were elected, our job is to know about everything that is going on in this city. So we can't sit here and tell this guy, we don't know what's going on. Because it's our responsibilities as council members and mayors to know what is going on and to inform ourselves so that we can inform the public.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Uh, Your Honor.
Dr. McCamey.
Yes, sir.
So I'd just like to say, definitely not my intention. I understand that frustration to string, string you along. Like it's been said multiple times, I wasn't here when you first, you first asked for this approval. So I, I can't answer for those who made a decision before me. So I don't know what else to add. Ms. Kelly's not here to respond to all these.
Councilman, that's part of what I was going to state. He's, he's made several accusations. Um, the city manager is not here to represent any facts. Um, I, I think it would be wise that, that she would be in the position where she can address some of these concerns.
Well, Your Honor, I can address one issue that, that Dr. McCamey raised about the local fire marshal.
Yes, sir.
The local fire marshal is the Troup County Fire Marshal. He refused himself, because he is an employee of Troup County. Dr. McCamey is a Troup County Commissioner that's absolutely clear ethical conduct of interest. That's why the Troup County Fire Marshal and Ms. Kelly sought the assistance of the State Fire Marshal.
Well, after about six months, I'm glad you told. After about, I mean, that would've been.
That was a conversation you and I had as well.
Yeah.
And when you asked me why that was the case, that was a conversation. So that's not the first time that you've heard that.
No, you never told me it was a conversation of interest. You, you, but he just did.
It's not remotely.
Okay.
So, so.
Go ahead, Mr. Morgan.
Yeah, I'd like to continue.
Yes, sir.
I, I don't wanna get in just a, a heated argument.
Yes, sir.
I, I wanna be transparent with you. And I've had citizens this past week, recently, ask me to dig into things, which I've asked the staff to dig into. And I don't personally have a clear conscience making a vote until those issues are dealt with. Now, I understand, you don't wanna be strung along, all this, but this is a very big decision for this community. And I'm not gonna vote on it until I have answers to some of those questions. Hope you can understand that. But if, if you really wanna push a vote right now, I don't think it's gonna go in your favor. So I would like the time to investigate some of those issues.
You have to understand, our meeting last week was only a week since you've seen us, because the meeting was pushed off because of the weather situation. So, yeah, we worked, I mean, we, we've had a week to look at some of the stuff and digest what you brought, which was passion. And it is things. What's unfortunate is thirty minutes before our last session, you sat down probably the best information that we've gotten from you, which is how many people do know you personally know your goals, know what you're about, right? That's the stuff that.
Very helpful information.
And, and I get you say she said she can't find the old ones. I probably wouldn't want it, the old ones, right? The new ones are the ones that speak volumes, right? Because those are the people who live there right now, you know? But like I said, there, there are a lot of people, a lot of questions have been asked. A lot of people have asked a lot of questions. The councils asked the city manager for information. They've asked other people for information. I, I think there's concerns, everybody's concern is the Department of Justice designation that exists on all your other facilities, right? Because it is. You, I mean, you know that. You've seen your Georgia score, you know, so it says, I take kids from defects. And then the next line item says Department of Juvenile Justice. So we all hear you say they're not taking children. What I have to ensure people is that, because when you read this list, y'all, it's a terrible list of some of these things. Yes, these are still human beings. As a Christian, these are children that need the type of love and support and the counseling and everything that he can give. So you have to know that these kids, that their only chance is someone like him stepping in, right? I mean, their chance is not under a bridge. Their chance is not the guy standing at the interstate that you see all the time. He's probably their only chance. Because, I mean, I'm not signed up as a foster parent. You know, if we all wanna be somebody amazing, why the hell are we not all signed up as foster parents? So I commend him for the fact that this has been his life's work, right? What we're just trying to do is protect everybody around, protect the little kids next door, protect everybody around. I believe in you. I believe in your goal. Mark believes in your goal. We all believe it. And I grew up next door to the George Baptist Children's Home. You know, I know for fact, one of our officers grew up there, because we grew up together. And he's made a great life of himself, because he had you, right? So do we need you? Yes, but I think everybody with a little more time, I mean, with a little more time to digest it is, is probably your best option. And making sure that everybody can see that, I mean, you know, if, if you'd asked me earlier, I would've told you that if I were the daycare owner, I would've been concerned about it. In fact, you brought me a letter from our that says, I support you, you know?
One hundred percent.
I mean, hell, I, look at the building a lump, you know, and that's what most of the letters say, is look what you've done. You know, just aesthetics, just what you've done to the building that had a, had a tree growing, trees growing off the roofs. I mean, my God, it looked like somebody planted shrubberies on top of the roof, so.
And I do wanna make one statement, Your Honor, about, um, you did a statement. I said on last week, and I wanted to make a record of, we were not accepting, and we, we don't have any DJJ children now. But that's not our forte. We're not gonna have DJJ children at that location. Uh, and I want the record to say that, okay?
And I, like I said, I, I believe, I believe everything that you're, you're for, you know? But I think if there's, if there is time that is needed for people to get all the information, just like you said, then, you know, be res, I don't, I don't think anyone is out to not see this, you know, happen. I think that a lot of people just, you know, it came, it came quick. I know for you, it's been long, you know, but, I mean, what you handed us thirty minutes before the meeting is, is, is a phenomenal testament, right? And what you handed us before this meeting is a.
And I gave it to the same.
Like you said, you're talking about this top state officials, the officials that can speak for you to share this, you know, the, the people who are where you're at. So those are big things that, that a lot, a lot, those were a lot of my questions. I'll be honest.
So I answered, so I answered them.
Yeah, I mean, for me, you answered a lot of mine.
And, and, and I reassure you, those kids are probably gonna be, that daycare kids are probably gonna be safer with me being there. And we're gonna bring and add to the community. We're not taking away from the community. The residential piece is just a small part of what we're gonna do here in this town. And it was on the agenda from the last council that we're gonna do this soup kitchen, that elderly people can eat free, Monday through Fridays. And the, the kitchen will be open on the first and third weekends. Oh, this is free to the community. That was on the agenda at that point. And this is not something I, I brought up last week. And some of the documents I looked at, um, you guys had a lot of stuff missing, but that, that's fine. Um, and I want you guys also understand that I'm frustrated. Uh, some comments, and I talked to the mayor today about it as I walked through the neighborhood, is that people say that I'm angry. Uh, people say that, uh, I'm defensive, and some of that's coming from downtown. I'm not angry. Well, I'm not defensive, but I am angry. And I'm angry because it seem like every corner I have a barrier, every time I come here, I get, I got something else I have to do. That's why I'm angry. But I teach my kids, my biological kids. I did the numbers. I ran a database. I have touched about twenty-seven hundred foster kids. They're in college, in the military. I had one cross the stage in Fort Valley, and I was a college professor. Because of confidentiality, I couldn't tell nobody. And I was sitting on the bench crying, real tears. And everybody said, what's wrong? The kid walked across the stage in the north. Well, you taught him, didn't you? And I couldn't even tell him. He was in my group home. And so we have painted my work. And as you say, the designation, the state has to put that out, and, and it's, and it's fair that people know the kind of kids we work with. Those kids are not animals.
No, I believe that.
Those kids are not, but you said they're dangerous. Those kids are not dangerous.
They have potential.
DJJ kids are dangerous. DJJ kids are dangerous. That's why they have to be detained. Excuse me for one second. That's why they have to be locked up. These kids are responding to trauma. And when you respond to trauma, you get depressed. You get to a point where you have no hope. You go to psychiatric hospitals. You end up bouncing around from foster homes, because you want your biological mom and dad, who abuse you. And so they get confused. So they're not dangerous. I'm gonna advocate for my children, because they're not dangerous. Now, if you're talking about a DJJ child, that's not what I do. Those kids are dangerous. Those are the kids that would jack your car. Those are the kids that would enter your home and, and, and rob you. Those are not the kids I'm trying to bring to Hogansville. I'm not doing that. I've said that now till I'm blue in the face. I started saying that in two thousand and ten, and I'm saying it in twenty twenty-three. That's how long I've been telling you guys. I'm not bringing a juvenile delinquent facility to this community. And I don't know what else to say.
Well, and that's.
And that's a promise, and that's in all your documents.
That's why we're asking.
Yes, ma'am.
That's, that's the only thing. That's why we're asking.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, and that's, and, and when I look at what your destinations are, I have to ask these questions.
Okay.
Because I am protective of all of our citizens, all of our community, and I want the best for them. And I also want the best for, for the kids that come in and for the daycare next door. I really do. And I think this could be something wonderful if we can get it cleared up, what we have the destination. That's all that I'm concerned. I mean, it sounds like you got that cleared up.
Yes, ma'am.
So it sounds like when you put in for the destination on this one, that it will not have the DJJ joint customer.
Absolutely. And that was the agreement I made with the, uh, first council. They, they said no DJJ.
See, we didn't know that.
Okay, but it, it should've been in the paperwork. I mean, and, and that was approved, especially.
It wasn't, so.
I've been, I've been listening to this information going out in the community since, I remember it was on the agenda back in July, and we said, no way, we had to bring it to a work session. So I took it upon myself back in early July to start compiling information from the neighborhoods, seeing how Ms. Jeter felt about it, um, seeing what the residents on Pine Street, how they felt about it, looking at all the research. Because I knew in July we put him off, so he could come to a work session. And last week, we had the chance to ask him any questions we had to ask. We knew this since July, that Dr. McCamey was coming before us in August. We put him off the agenda, so he can come to a work session and ask these questions. All of my questions were answered last week. All of the other questions should have been answered last week. So this. Me and the mayor have had a conversation, and, um, you know, you said you're losing sleep over this. I am too. So I would like to be able to sleep peacefully at night, getting this off of my back, okay? So this has lasted too long. Um, this week is qualifying for three city council seats. So I would like to just go ahead and put this to sleep tonight.
Dr. McCamey, I really do appreciate your effort. I appreciate everybody here who is, who is sending me a favor. Um, at the end of the day, I think this is up to the council to, to make the decision they'd like to do tonight, so I'm not sure, I think.
The first motion was a motion by Councilman Stripling, Stripling to table this matter until the next meeting. And that needs to be either a second and a vote, or if there's no second, that motion fails.
So I have a, a motion from Ms. Stripling, if it's still being made,
Yes.
to table the decision on the special use permit renewal to the following council meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor of tabling this matter for a vote for next, till, until next meeting, please show by raising of your hands. Motion is denied. Is there another motion?
I make a motion to approve the special use permit.
I have a motion and a second to approve the special use permit as stated for the family life sentence. All in favor, please show by raising of your hands. Motion carries.
Thank you, sir. And, uh, I got your information, your assistant, and I wish I could mentor. Okay, so, uh, except we can, we can start without a war, if I wanted to.
Ladies and gentlemen, you still have a council meeting in session and other things on our agenda, so I would ask everyone to please, if you're gonna leave, go ahead and, just go if you're happy to stick, if you wanna stick around.
On the outskirts of the, the events, uh, we did have some of the partygoers that came in, uh, with our officers. Uh, two bikes were broken up. This was because of information given by the partygoers. Uh, this was apparently people who were outside of the party who was coming in. Uh, during this, there was, uh, one person that was arrested for a suspended license. Uh, one person was arrested for possession and intent to distribute, possession of drug-related items, uh, possession of firearms and commission of felony possession by a felon. Uh, one minor in possession of firearms. Police recovered five handguns. Warrants are being issued for one person for child endangerment. Uh, and then we have investigations for strong purchase. Uh, it is important to note that these incidences were not directly related to this gathering. These were outside of the gathering. Georgia State Patrol was there. Uh, they were involved in two chases of dirt bikes that showed up in and around the party. Our flock cameras picked up eight hundred vehicle tags within a period of about three hours. Most of these tags were from out of town. Uh, we did get assistance from other agencies that came out because of the size of the event. And, uh, Monday, when the proprietor did talk with the captain, uh, he, he welcomed law enforcement. So we had agents, uh, from West Point, Georgia State Patrol, Troup County Sheriff's Department, Graham, and Kelly that could, could assist in this. Uh, what I take from it is it was a perfect example of community and police department working together. Uh, the organizer of this event knew this was gonna be a big event. He didn't want anything to happen. And I think because of the presence, presence of the police department, they had a good time. These people that were trying to intermingle into their party and cause these issues were, were dealt with before they could get in there and cause these issues. Uh, again, one of the most, uh, really disturbing to me is the fact that we, we recovered five handguns. Some of those were from juveniles, uh, that, that were in the area trying to intermingle in, into this group. As far as I know, they, they had a, a good time at, at their, uh, thing. As all, when things grow and kinda take a life of its own, took a little bit to get it shut down. A lot of the group people helped the officers to get it shut down, and within that party, we had no incidents, uh, no use of force incidents there. Uh, everything was pretty much on the outskirts. So, uh, that was, uh, we, we had a lot of college people asking what was going on. Uh, a lot of people thought, you know, that we were doing road checks, roadblocks, everything. But, uh, with, with everything that was going on in the city, we just had a lot of help from some other departments, because on a general night, we generally run, are running fifty-three officers in a night. And it was, uh, it would've been an overwhelming, um, mission for two police officers. Uh, again, I, you know, commend the organizers of this event. It's a very peaceful event. Everything worked out well. Uh, they were very cooperative with the police department, much of our issues were on the outskirts. And that's all I.
Appreciate that, Chief. Thank you for being so on top of everything. I think it's good for rest of the planning thing. Just like we had the Hummingbird Festival, and I think we had large amounts of people coming down. It's important to be prepared, so thank you for that. I know your team was on top of it, so. All right, moving on to council member reports. Mr. Taylor.
Um, I don't have anything further. Um, Chief, just thank you for what you guys did. And collaborating with that event. It's good to see the collaboration between the community and police. So thank you for collaboration.
I'd just like to say, I have, I have a lot of hope for this community. And even though there's differences in our opinions, we can learn to overcome that and still love and care for each other. Kinda sick of all these issues tearing our community apart. I think Hogansville is a bigger place than constantly being torn apart. And I'd say for my part, I love all of you. You may not love me. That's fine. But I think there's, there's bigger things, and I think unity is huge for this community. Let's not let, let, let's not let these issues tear us apart. That's all.
Again, Chief, thanks for, I know when you guys got the call, this has sent out messages and said, we're on it, we're handling it. So, you know, I think that says a lot. I think when you see the staff that you've got, I know you do a really good job of hiring these guys, as men and women, you know, to try to bring the best to Hogansville and the most qualified. And, and there's a man's life that's a testament to it. And that's not the first time you've come in front of us and told us, you know, that it was your guys' responsibility, you know?
that it was your guys' responses, you know? And that's something that this community, you know, we're grateful for. I'm proud of you. It's crazy and that people, you know, people don't realize exactly what y'all see every day. And, you know, saving lives and, you know, people see the negative. But you guys are great, and you're doing a great job. I appreciate it. As for everybody else showing up and showing here for support and opinions, that's, that's what this country is founded on, right? Is the ability to have and do. And we just saw a man who puts his daily work in trying to be the person that these kids don't have. And that is something that we all should strive to be. And if it's this community's support for that and, you know, keeping that resource, having that resource here, you know, to hear him talk about the Phase 2 center having counseling and mental health and even down to marriage counseling. I have to drive my daughter to Carrollton, the other side of Carrollton is the therapist. You know, for some people, that's undoable. And, you know, for some people, that's not, not a possibility. So the man has a vision. Are there inherent problems with it? He told us that. He told us that every time something drastic or something that is on a certain list happens, he has to make those calls. I think that what we have to see is the possibilities and the, you know, the potential of these kids walking across the stage or getting a diploma or getting their GED or getting a job. And that's, you know, we have to see the opportunity. We can't always see all of the negative. He's made some big, old promises. So we hold him to those, right? But hold him to his big, old promises, but you can believe in him, right? You have to give somebody a chance. And I think this community is founded on hard work and willing people. So, you know, that's why I think we're here and, you know, we'll hold him to it and let's support him and, you know, let the churches support him and let's rehab some boys, right? Give them a second mama or a third mama or five of them, you know? That's what they got to have. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Ayers?
Yeah. I want to say thank you as well, Chief. I mean, we got the text and just knowing that you guys are out there and watching over that whole situation, super comforting that night. And I definitely agree with everything that Councilman Nice said. I fully understand the need to have all the information. I fully understand to hear the pros and cons, the concerns and the excitement for anything that happens in this city. I do believe that this council as a whole and the council before and the council before that did their absolute very best to ensure that they always got all the information that they had access to to try to make an informed decision on what they thought was best. And with that, I unequivocally do support Dr. McCamey and the Family Life Center. To not, I'm not going to keep everybody here all night, but it is very, very dear to my heart. When I first moved to Hogansville seven years ago, it was my number one plan was to try to have and start and fund a place for the young men who age out and can no longer be in the care of people like Dr. McCamey. And it is very rare and very in between that someone has the passion and calling to do that. So I definitely support that. But like I said, I also do understand that we do have to always get all the information that we can get access to in order to make an informed decision for everybody. There are a lot of people that live in this city. Even though people think it is small, it is a lot of individuals and a lot of souls that do live in this city. And I do believe that this council, especially in the last two years, has done everything it could to make sure we made the most informed decision on that. And that's it.
Mr. Ayers, Ms. Stripling?
Yes. I love that we can come together and that we can talk about issues and we can share ideas and even our concerns. And they, you know, there's, you have to look at both sides. And that's what I've been trying to do. And now that the decision is made, you know, I'll be fully in support and I have high hopes for this facility, for great things to come from it. And I've been looking forward to that and will support it 100%. I mean, that's what we're all about here, is being able to help our community grow where the community wants to grow. So I'm satisfied with the vote that we've had tonight. And we'll just move forward in a very positive way.
Thank you, Ms. Stripling.
I don't have a lot to add as far as my report goes. I will take this opportunity because there's more people in the room than normal. And we have a nice, lovely camera lady here with us tonight. No offense. One, one, one very important part of Hogansville moving forward is trying to have very good, clear communication. When there's issues, when there's things like votes like tonight, all the way down to where there's dealing with, dealing with your water pressure issues. So we have been pushing extremely hard over the last year to try to help communicate with citizens across the board on any given issue, especially important issues that affect your day-to-day lives. Over the next 30 to 60 days, for those of you who were not here prior to this council meeting, we're going to be putting out a series of community events where we are helping to explain to the communities and things that are going to be happening over the next several, really the next several years, but specifically over the next 12 to 18 months in regards to your water system. And so we want to be super, super clear with what the expectations are to come. And so we will be putting those dates out. Hopefully by next council meeting, two weeks from now, we will have those dates set and locations set. We're going to do them in multiple locations across the city so that we can help give as much information to the citizens as possible as well as have an opportunity for citizens to come ask us questions. And a lot of this has to do with your water system, your meters and so on. And there is a lot of stuff that happens on the surface. Every now and then, we have something that come up where a lot of people want to be in the know. Most of the time, our staff, city council, police department are dealing with issues that affect your day-to-day lives, but you don't know what's going on. And so we have a system, constant contact. I don't think, maybe the board is out there, but you can sign up for our newsletter that goes out every single week with very important information. Of course, we have our city Facebook page and other avenues that we try to get information. But please, if you are watching tonight or if you're here, over the next 30 to 60 days, we will have some very important information in regards to your water system. And so I want to make sure we make a note of that. And that was discussed and linked in our work session prior to this council meeting. Other than that, I think it's really good to have new things coming to town. We've got new businesses opening up downtown. I think gatherings that bring more pride and energy to Hogansville, no matter what the sizes, are fun. I appreciate the police's effort as well as the party organizers to let us know, "Hey, there might be an extra 500 or 600 people in town this week. You might want to be aware." Because that's extremely important. And so we've got a lot of great things coming up. You know, we're back to school. There are all kinds of needs in this community. We have multiple youth programs that are already existing that are trying to help resource our students as they get back to school with school supplies, backpacks, with all kinds of stuff. So if you are uninvolved, I would encourage you to try to figure out where are some of the areas, myself, other council members and other people that are here that have been involved in mentoring. And so there's a lot of opportunities for you to give back to this community. And the more people that know about those opportunities, the better this community is going to be. So I appreciate everybody showing up tonight. Thank you, BTV, for being with us tonight. It gives us a little bit higher quality. We expect you to be here for.
He's saying he's sending the chief after me.
I have nothing else to add with that. So with that, I would ask for a motion for our meeting to be adjourned.
Second.
All in favor, please show by raising of your hands. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, guys.